...just like we did the other speakers. But please, the one thing we ask is don't just repeat what's already been said. That will save us a lot of time. And by all means, don't feel you have to use your full three minutes. Now, and here with the three minutes, which is standard for us in council meetings, the podium has lights on it, and I believe it's at 30 seconds you see the yellow light come on, which is a warning to you that you have 30 seconds. The red light comes on and you are done. So those are the rules, and I hope everyone will work with us to abide by them. We really are anxious to hear from you tonight. I'm going to read two names at a time so that the person following will know who's next. First is Tim O'Donnell, and he will be followed by Sharon Hauser. Tim, I don't know how early you had to get here to get number one on this list.
You've got to have friends in high places.
Oh.
Madam Chairperson, council members, I'm here representing the Downtown Residence Coalition. We're a group of homeowners that live in the core of downtown, right on Tijon Street. We have collectively invested over $14 million in downtown, in our residences. We are there 24 hours a day, which means we see the daytime commerce and tourism, as well as the nighttime entertainment activities that take place. Like other neighborhoods, we want to preserve and enhance our standard of living. Most of the residents have expressed a desire to opt out of recreational sales. This sentiment is based on fear of the unknown impact to our neighborhood. We have questions. How many retail outlets or private smoking clubs can be set up in close proximity? We currently have 93 active liquor licenses in the 80903 ZIP code. How many retail licenses can one person or corporation acquire? What entity is going to administer the home rule regulations? The Liquor Board? The Marijuana Board? What are the criteria for granting a license? Can both a liquor and marijuana license be granted to one individual or corporation? How will tourists know that they can't smoke marijuana in public? Does smoking marijuana in public include my balcony, which is part of my residence that oversees Tijon Street? The nightclub rooftops that currently exist? How will CSPD actively enforce the no smoking in public law or use scarce resources for higher priority crimes? Will restaurants be allowed to sell marijuana-enhanced desserts? You don't have to smoke it. If I don't want to use my six-plant entitlement, can I assign them to someone else for either personal or commercial use? Will downtown stores be allowed to give away marijuana as a marketing incentive? We've already seen this in Denver, where a hookah place said you buy $50 worth of stuff will give you, so they're not selling it, they're giving it. Will there be a separation of alcohol sales and marijuana use in downtown? And what agency will enforce this? Code enforcement at 2:00 AM in the morning? How severe will the penalties be for violations? I'm sure there are other impacts that we haven't thought of yet, because you don't know what you don't know. Although we would prefer an opt-out vote, we strongly urge a moratorium, at very least, to allow a local task force to thoroughly examine and address as many local concerns as possible. We believe that residents should be included in that task force. Thank you for hearing our position. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Next is Sharon Hauser, followed by, looks like, Mark Dedwell.
Hi, I'm Sean Hauser. I'm an attorney in Denver, and I work with Sensible Colorado. And I just kind of wanted to speak to the bigger picture. There's a lot of fear, and that usually comes along with change, but this is not uncharted water for Colorado Springs. They've done an excellent job regulating medical marijuana, and the citizens in Colorado Springs and of Colorado voted in strong favor for Colorado Springs to control marijuana responsibly and take it off the streets and into the hands of responsible retailers. And the state's created an extremely well-funded, crafted system. They looked at, they had a thorough task force that looked at what didn't work in medical marijuana, and they found solutions. And there's a lot of answers to the questions that are here in these thorough regulations. And this regulatory model is extremely well-funded. There's a funding stream from the general fund, from the Marijuana Enforcement Division. There's additional funding from application fees, licensing fees, and operating fees, which can cover any costs associated with implementation, including inspections, even unannounced ones. The city could generate conservatively millions of dollars, which could hire at least 12 police officers or firefighters. And there's a number of things the city could do and needs, could do with the revenue and that the city needs. There's a lot of speculation about whether or not the tax bill will pass. The poll had 77 percent support for the tax bill, and most people who voted for 64, do you want it taxed and regulated, and do you want the taxes to benefit them and their cities? And in the small, minute event that the taxes wouldn't pass, the city would certainly have the opportunity to ban it after that if they wanted to. Never in history has funding ever been denied from the federal government to a state with marijuana laws. There's 18 states plus DC with marijuana laws, and other states coming online every month now. It's unprecedented, and it's never happened in history. And Colorado Springs has had marijuana laws on the books for years now, and it simply just hasn't happened, and there's a small risk of it happening. And, I mean, the big picture is marijuana is here. Like people have said, every adult can use and transfer it. It's up to you guys whether or not you can, you want to control it responsibly. And controlling it responsibly means opting into the comprehensive regulatory scheme that's substantially funded and has controls on potency and strain. And if you don't regulate it, citizens will buy it elsewhere, they will get it elsewhere, and the revenue will go elsewhere as well.
Sean, thank you. Next is Mark Dedwell, it looks like, followed by Diane Carlson. Mark? No, Mark? Okay, Diane Carlson. And Keith Proctor will follow Diane.
Hi, I'm Diane Carlson, and I'm here to represent Smart Colorado. Smart Colorado formed in early March when a group of concerned citizens who participated in the task force proceedings became concerned that everyday citizens needed to have a voice in the process, with the belief that public health and safety should not be compromised and that the state should limit negative and unintended consequences. While we hope Smart's presence made a difference during the legislative session and some important safeguards were put in place, we saw firsthand how many uncertainties remain and how so many of our state-elected officials mentioned how they didn't have the time to gather the reliable information or to do the necessary analysis. It was like everyone was just kind of closing their eyes and hoping for the best. And like any new emerging industry, the ones guiding the policy setting, the go-to for the information, were the folks from the marijuana industry, the ones to reap the financial benefits of a rapid industry expansion within Colorado's borders. And while you've heard today from so many people about all the uncertainties, including the taxes, another concern of ours is how the state plans to address the alarmingly high potency rates of smoked and vaporized marijuana and the sale of marijuana-infused products, which is foods, candies, sodas, lotions, oils. These are not subject to FDA rules and testing like other drugs and consumer products. This issue is not addressed in any of the bills, and we hope it will be addressed during the emergency rulemaking process. Another concern is how we're monitoring, I mean, you heard about the seed-to-sale tracking, and from the state audit, we learned that that is not happening at all. Second half of that audit is coming out in the middle of July, and I would really recommend that you wait and you read that. I know the city of Denver is having their audit come out on medical marijuana, and I would really encourage Colorado Springs to do an audit of their own and for us to make sure that we're regulating medical marijuana before we start adding additional shops. Voters voted for cities and counties to have the opportunity to opt out of the retail and commercialization aspects of 64. And we highly recommend that Colorado Springs does that, or at least waits until all the uncertainties are resolved, and you can always opt back in, or at the very minimum enact a moratorium. We just urge you to be thoughtful and responsible and just not rush it. I mean, that's what we were saying to the state, but the state unfortunately did not have the option. But the cities and counties do. And most importantly, while we all agree that recreational marijuana is supposed to be for adults 21 and over, diversion is a huge problem. And as a state, we have been grossly negligent. The messaging to our kids is that marijuana is a wellness product. And Smart Colorado advocated very aggressively for there to be education in high schools and middle schools across Colorado so our kids could be armed with how, the recent research on how marijuana impacts the teen brain. This is information that few kids or adults, for that matter, no.
Okay, sorry, Diane, but thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Keith Proctor, followed by Mary Griffiths.
Yeah, I'm going to do this because I've got a bad back. My name is Keith Proctor. I have a graduate degree in molecular biology and comparative animal behavior. I almost lost my daughter twice from suicide 25 years ago, and I pulled up many articles of research from top universities and gave her a guitar if she could pass a test on it. And she eventually got off of marijuana. 25 years later, she still has agoraphobia, fear of crossing open spaces and crowds. She still has anxiety attacks, severe depression, 25 years later. I mean, this is a first-person experience. Here's a brain scan. I mean, I gave, all the city council have 25, have a research stack of 50 major research articles from Harvard's, John Hopkins, Columbia, UCLA. You have 50 copies, 50 articles on the devastating effects they have found with marijuana. You have a copy of that. And the brain scans with loss obvious, from smokers, marijuana, obvious loss of neural In Sweden, they had 45,000 18-year-old conscript soldiers, did studies on them over 15 years. And of the ones that smoked marijuana, there were 670 percent increase in schizophrenia. Other studies, found several studies where they found that people that use marijuana have a 370 to 300 percent increase in psychotic experiences. In teens that smoked marijuana, lost as much as 8 percent, 8 IQ points, from the ages of 13 to the ages of 38. Eight points of IQ. The important thing is, when they quit smoking marijuana, they never got it back. I mean, this stuff is horrendous. And I've done my research. I've done my homework. I know what I'm talking about. The bottom, there's several bottom lines. If people can walk into a retail marijuana-
Mr. Proctor, I really am sorry. Your time is up, and we're holding everybody strictly to the three minutes, so.
Anyway.
Thank you, and I know you've sent us some information, or left some information for us, so we could, we hand it here to Amy, right over here?
No, which one do you need to get?
She will, she will take care of that for us.
This is the summary of the fifth research article that I made. This is the summary.
Great.
You can read it in 20 minutes.
Thank you. She will-
There's an extra copy of this if somebody else wants it.
She will absolutely make sure that we get those copies for you, and thank you. Thank you for coming. Mr. Proctor, I'm sorry, your time is up, and we need to move on. We've got a lot of people waiting to speak.
I understand.
So thank you for being here today. We do appreciate it. Next is Mary Griffiths.
We're talking about marijuana roulette, is what we're talking about.
Is Mary Griffiths here?
Mary Griffiths, I spoke on her behalf.
She was the transit rider. Okay. Next is Casey Stark, and that'll, Casey will be followed by Wayne Floreng.
It's good to see you again. My name is Casey Stark, and I was here last week, and I was here three years ago. And it really seems like a deja vu, and I think I'm having a psychotic experience because I'm hearing Reefer Madness all over this place again. We were here three years ago. We worked together, Jane Martin. We worked together with the city clerk. We worked together with Mayor Aaron O'Vary. We worked together with Sean Page. We worked together with Tom Gallagher. We talked about the issues, zoning, leasing. We haven't seen an increase in fires at these centers. I wake up every day trying to find out how I can comply to the rules. We pay our taxes. I'm a veteran. I voted against A64. I own a doctor's office. I stand to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars. But the American me, even though I voted against it, it appalled me to see that someone, even a general, which stated that we will never stand in the way, will accept the will of the people, and then they go on for 14 minutes with fear and Reefer Madness. It confounds me, because in the second grade, I learned a thing, that I'm just a bill, I'm just a bill, I'm sitting here on Capitol Hill. In America, but I believe that. I believe that. My teacher told me-
Casey, Casey, I'm sorry, but we just can't do this. We will be here all night.
Well, don't clap.
We are going to have members from both sides speaking on this topic, and we just really need to respect each other and keep moving forward, so Casey.
But that bill, that song meant something to me as a second grader. I joined the service. I fly a flag. And it's based on a simple thing that my second-grade teacher told me, that we're different, Casey, because we are self-governed. We represent ourselves. So even though I voted against A64, even though it takes thousands of dollars out of my pocket every month, I will refuse to sit back and let fear and ignorance and the fear of the unknown we heard today. And the drug testing company, with all due respect to Joe, if I made money from taking people's urine, I think I would be against it too. If, she says her future study, which is quite interesting, it's a beautiful slider, but it also shows that she guessed the rate of marijuana at $600 per pound wholesale. That's absurd. I don't know how much marijuana Joe sells, but I sell a lot of it. And it's about $2,000 a pound, so her estimate is off by a factor of four. So with all due respect, I simply like to ask President and members of the council, don't kick the ball down the road. This is a moment in time where you have a historical diligence and a duty to, one, respect the will of the people regardless of what they've, what your personal instincts are, because this is America. That should be foremost. And secondly, all the fear and loathing we're hearing is the same thing I heard before. I mean, Pete Carey, Vance, I know you guys. I mean, my application is this thick. I had to submit 10 years of documents, and all the other center owners did too. The FBI checks us out, the DEA. We're not bad people. I want a fitness center right across the street where I train Olympians. Thank you. Please form a task force, address it like adults, and deal with it. Thank you very much.
Next is Wayne Floreng, and followed by William Murray.
My name is Wayne Flornoy, and I'm the former director of engineering for computer and storage system hardware development at Compact Computer, which is now Hewlett Packard, and Seagate Technology. And I would like to convince you today that retail dispensaries will shrink Colorado Springs gangs. Next. Gangs can't compete with dispensaries. You can eliminate their top revenue generator, which is marijuana. It's their staple sales item. They use it to open the door for selling hard drugs. And the market for hard drugs is going to shrink too, with dispensaries being legalized, because they'll no longer be sustained by the marijuana sales force. The black market is the gateway to hard drugs. It's not marijuana. Colorado Springs gangs will shrink because of the lost revenue. Their businesses run by adults. Marijuana sales is a primary activity. The FBI says that it's a top revenue generator, and the NDCP says it's 60 percent of profits for the drug cartels. The National Drug Intelligence Center tells us that cartels are operation, operating as of 2011 in five Colorado cities, Colorado Springs being one of them. They also tell us that gangs dominate the retail drug sales. They're solidifying their ties to cartels by providing warehousing, security, and transportation services, and some are even franchises of the cartels. Next. The dispensaries will significantly reduce the gang presence in the city. Loss of marijuana profits is going to reduce the gang appeal to members and recruits. They have less profits to buy powerful weapons, cars, consumer goods, and sustenance for their families. You can shut down their marijuana sales force, and many will be relocated to more lucrative places. And dispensaries protect your kids. Regulated sales will make marijuana less available to kids. Gangs don't ask for IDs. What gangs do do is they recruit kids to sell the drugs at their school. The kids become a part of the gang, and their lives are ruined. Next. The Colorado Springs Police Department tells us in November 2011 that there were 1,300 documented gang members in Colorado Springs. 90, they were members of 97 gangs with names like The Bloods and The Crips. Next. End the marijuana black market by allowing dispensaries. You'll shrink Colorado Springs gangs, just like they shrink after prohibition ended. You'll shrink the hard drug sales force, and you'll protect your kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flornoy. Ladies and gentlemen, I really am going to ask you again to please stop clapping. All right, next is William Murray, and he will be followed by Ingrid Henderson, looks like Henderson.
Council members, my name is William Murray, and I'm a retired Army officer and currently a defense contractor, living in the Briar Gate area. I've learned that if we do not control our environment, then that environment will control us. I believe this is the time to address the true issues of marijuana. Colorado Springs have voted that the use of marijuana is an individual issue, not a government issue. In a democracy, when a law is wildly abused, it loses its moral validity. History shows that vice, when regulated and taxed, is far healthier for society than black mark advice. We can reference these trends from alcohol to gambling to drugs. First of all, I want to assert my firm belief that our greatest obstacle here is the fear of information, which is irrational, sourceless, and bordering on gossip, which paralyzes our thoughts and efforts needed to reach resolution. Last week, the Sky Sox were leaving if we didn't build a stadium downtown. The week before, the military was going to leave if we had recreational marijuana. Both statements have proven to be false. I grew up in the '60s, when the fear of marijuana been fed by the 1936 film Reefer Madness. I also, and because of the threat of the Cold War, it taught me to hide underneath my desk during nuclear explosions. Neither fear has proven to be correct or even effective. What we do know is that marijuana will be legal in Colorado. They will get to vote on its taxation in November, and that Denver has already stated it will opt in. I'm asking the city council to be pragmatic and realistic, and opt in as well. We have seen there's been minimal negative impact with medical marijuana. What is interesting is that we apparently trust our citizens with weapons and alcohol, but not marijuana. To opt out is to suggest that the citizens of Colorado Springs are incapable of controlling their impulses, and that only the government is capable of citing these issues in their best interests. In addition, we'll be denying ourselves the access to additional sales tax revenue, which will then go to the Denver metropolitan area. I'm asking that we all get out from underneath the chair and our fears and face the issue with informed thoughtfulness and integrity. The informed issue decision is for Colorado Springs to opt out, correction, opt in, and help control the outcome. In conclusion, there's two things I want you to reflect on, on all the speakers this evening. The first is not a single speaker spoke to the success of the current system. Not a single one of them. The current system has failed. The recognition of that, of course, is the legalization of marijuana currently. And second of all, okay, it's very important to think in the overall scheme of how the community is really going to be reflected on. What people have failed to address here is we're not talking about legalization.
Bill, I'm sorry, but thank you very much for being here tonight. Next is Ingrid Henderson, followed by Stephen Rizzi.
My name is Ingrid, and I'm a student at UCCS, and I'm a member of Students for Sensible Drug Policy, and I'm also a member of UCCS Radio. And I believe that opting in to Amendment 64 is a surefire way to implement economic success in Colorado Springs. I believe that the taxes used from this can greatly, greatly benefit our education. And you've already heard a lot about it, but we just closed down a high school, three elementary schools are closed, and you know that our funding is the least spent on education in this state, and we spend more money on prisons, and I think that speaks to a lot. By passing Amendment 64, we can put that money into our schools. I know there was some talk about it not going there, but we've already seen huge, huge tax dollars benefit our community, and it'd be a great asset to our community. Touching on that, I do have two children, and there has been lots of concerns for their education, and I've had to seek other schools that fit their needs. And I would like to live in a community where I feel confident that my child's education is at your top priority. I also wanted to touch on the tax dollars needed and the jobs. Medical marijuana has created a plethora of jobs in our community, and this would just expand on that exponentially. By having more jobs stimulates our economy all around. Like it's already been said, you know people are buying marijuana on the black market. You know that they're buying it if they don't have medical marijuana. We saw that on Craigslist. We saw all that happening. Let's put that money into our community. We need it really bad. And what I'd like to finish on is the decriminalization of marijuana would benefit our community hugely, because we would actually be putting real criminals in prisons, and I would really like my tax dollars to go to the criminals being in prisons. And also, like was said earlier, marijuana is not a gateway drug. It becomes a gateway drug when you go to a drug dealer and other drugs are offered to you. I would really, really like our children to feel safe in the community, and I would feel safe knowing that somebody has to be carded, and they have to be 21 to get it legally. And just like alcohol, yes, they might get it some other way, but just like we've seen with alcohol, the regulation has had great benefits for our society, our community as a whole. I really, really, please, take the time. And also, I wanted to make a quick comment on those medical benefits, those medical detriments. There is tons of medical benefits, and I know this is not about that, but if you do take a look, you can Google real quick and find really hard facts, tons of research, funded research. It's saving lives. It will continue to save lives, and by putting recreational use, we can really, really save our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ingrid. Stephen Rizzi, followed by TJ Lauriston, it looks like.
Hello, City Council. My name is Stephen Rizzi, and I work in film. I operate a film production company in Nashville. I recently moved out here to Tennessee because of my support for cannabis. And let me tell you, there's a lot of people in the United States that support cannabis. I was blown away actually to hear through the grapevine that Colorado Springs may not support opting in. It wasn't just El Paso County that passed A64, it was the entire state, and there's a reason. The people, the majority, see cannabis as a good thing, actually, a great thing. It's something that they prescribe to you medically. So the people legalize cannabis, but won't be able to purchase it here in Colorado Springs. I mean, that blows my mind. What you guys should be thinking about here is how can we, as city council, embrace this opportunity? How can we make Colorado Springs a thriving city, a model for other cities to follow, and even other countries? This isn't going to stop. So here's the message. The military assures you we'll be fine, and they'll operate as usual, defending the people's freedoms. I was in the military and never smoked marijuana while I served. It was illegal then, and it will remain illegal now. That's the end of the issue there. So use the structure that A64 has provided for you and make Colorado Springs prosperous, something to bottle after. We do have a very unique situation here in Colorado Springs, and I say we should all take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you. TJ, or Stephen. TJ Lauriston is next, followed by Merrill Sharper.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, President. I'm TJ Lauriston with United Food and Commercial Workers International Union and Local Seven here in Colorado. We represent 25,000 members in Colorado, and we are the largest union of such. But what I want to talk about is the endorsement of Amendment 64 by UFCW and the polling that we took behind that. All of, almost all of our members, 25,000 of them, are required to take drug tests and work in a drug-free workplace, and they all know the rules. None of those, I shouldn't say none, but most of those do not use marijuana, but yet 60 percent of our membership voted for Amendment 64. They voted for it to clean up our neighborhoods and to provide a safe place for us to raise our families. They voted for it because, you know, they're tired of cartels taking advantage of our youth, turning them out to street gangs. We also represent, besides the food processing manufacturing industry, also represent cannabis industry throughout the country. And we own, we represent hundreds of dispensaries and grows. And contrary to popular- And contrary to popular belief, these are not drug dealers and thugs. These are business people that want to make a good, honest living, and they want to be accepted by their community, they want to hold their heads up high, and they want their children to be treated just like everybody else's children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Charles Guy. He'll be followed by, no wait, I skipped Merrill Saper. Sarper? And Charles Guy will be next. So Mr. Guy, you'll be next.
Hello, Madam Chairman and Council. Firstly, thank you so much for being our city council. My name is Merrill Sarper. I'm a Colorado native. I'm a senior mechanical engineering and sustainable development student, a UCCS student ambassador, a chancellor's leadership scholar, and a mathematics tutor at the University of Colorado at Colorado Springs. Being a quite nerdy and mathematical individual, I know that there's always a really efficient way to do something. Today, I'll speak on why the most efficient path to maximize our community's strengths here in Colorado Springs is to opt in and allow recreational cannabis establishments. My top reason is local economy. We speak so much in this town of creating jobs and stimulating our economy. Cannabis business is a glaring opportunity staring us in the face. If we choose to ban it and opt in, we will regret it and only the black market will prosper. With high gross, in-state, and sales tax revenue for medical cannabis just in El Paso County alone, and people empowered in their local businesses, ask yourself, what could the numbers be on the 2015 graph if we opt in, positive ones? If we don't opt in, negative ones? I am the president of Students for Sensible Drug Policy. Students for Sensible Drug Policy is the international grassroots network of students who are concerned about the impact drug abuse has in our community, but also know that the war on drugs is failing our generation and our society. I neither condone nor condemn drug use. Rather, I respect the individual's right to make decisions about their own health and well-being, and I have enough faith in our soldiers that they will follow military law and not partake. And for those really concerned about PTSD, they can Google PTSD cannabis research, and they might be pleasantly surprised. So, as for education, there is no historical evidence. We will lose $1 billion in educational funding because the federal government wants to punish us. I actually had the opportunity to meet with the chancellor of UCCS, and we both agreed on-campus use will be illegal, as Amendment 64 states it will be. She also assured me, our only stance is to uphold federal law. But I have to ask you, what if federal law is wrong? We have to ask these bold questions. Federally, a Schedule I substance means it has no medical value. If you read the front page of the Sunday Gazette on June 9th titled "Saving Charlotte", you can agree that there is medical value. Consider that this is no different than fighting for women's rights and civil racial rights. We look back on those days 100 years ago when we realized we were wrong. Marijuana acceptability can be present in Colorado Springs. I am the antithesis of the stereotypical hippie stoner. I'm, I hope you do the same and support the community.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. Next speaker is Charles Guy, followed by Dennis Moore.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman. My name is Charles H. Guy, a former adjunct professor at three schools in the state and city of Colorado. I worked for Colorado Technical University, I worked for Phoenix University, the Rye, and the junior college system here. When I heard about this situation about drugs, I keep hearing things about, there's a law. So I decided to come to this meeting tonight and bring the law in writing and pass it to the council members. The current law we're talking about wasn't passed until 1970. Many people don't even know what the law is. Would you please pass a copy out to the members, please? The law is very explicit, and we know that we are a nation of laws. And if the law says it's illegal, it's illegal. We know that we like to have recreational things that we think are good, bad, or indifferent. Some people like scotch, some people like beer, but that's socially accepted. But the law says still that marijuana is a controlled substance that's illegal, and they've classified it into three different areas. And I brought you a copy of this also. Would you pass this out? Here you are. Now what I'm saying is that it's very important to recognize that without laws, we can't survive. And we already know that the books say it's illegal. Citizens often vote from the heart, not necessarily knowing what the law is, but when we do know what the law is, we should follow it. And I'm saying that today, in my last comments, so people will understand, we got 50 states and the District of Columbia, and only 18 states currently have medical marijuana. Thank you very much. And the District of Columbia. There's only two states in the whole union that have recreational marijuana. We got 50 states and only two people think is getting involved. I'm saying the net results of a community's growth and whatnot is how well you take care of the citizens. If you know something is detrimental by law, you should leave it alone. If the government says no, we should say no as well. I know it doesn't sound right.
Mr. Guy, thank you so much for being here tonight and sitting through all the conversations. Next is Dennis Moore, followed by Gregory Duran.
Good afternoon, Miss Chairman and council members. I'm Dennis Moore. I come here to say what you already know. Your job is to govern. Sometimes when you're governing, it's not always what you want, it's what the people are asking for. And yes, there are laws, and there's times for laws to be changed. But whatever laws that you make, you can always adjust them any way once you set them, they're not in granted. My next area was the military. I have over 40 years' association with the military, grew up around two military bases, and started in the 50s and 60s, and I guarantee you, overseas and all the places I've been, marijuana has always been available. It is nothing new. But those of us who was in the military with those high clearances knew the rules, like a lot of businesses. You don't touch it, or you're going to be out. Same if you overuse alcohol. You don't do it, the alcohol abuse, you're going to be gone. So I'm not worried, as I heard some of these generals saying, I'm an enlisted guy. You know, I heard them say that, but I think there's enough leadership in the military who's emphasizing to their junior officers and enlisted people, you do not do this. So I have no fear that the military people will stay strong and keep their rules, and also any businesses who do that drug testing. And if you ever had to go through those drug tests the military did, I did for 40 years, it gets old, but you know the rules. I hope you think about this, and I voted against 64, but since the citizens said it, my job is to hope you find a way to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Gregory Duran, followed by Ron Nixon.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, City Council. This is my home. I grew up here, I raised four children, I have two grandchildren, and I come from a very diverse background. I'm very interested in educating kids. I've developed a program, it was called Colorado Springs Youth Cycling, teaching kids alternative things to expend their energy. I'm also a former co-chair of Drive Smart Colorado, which develops programs for kids through the, encouraging kids to develop programs through peer pressure. We have to really take a good, close look at this. One of the things, I do live in Denver now, I operated business downtown, I was a pedicab driver, owned the pedicab business, so I got to hear what was going on in the trenches. My concern is, Colorado Springs being my hometown, is the image that Colorado Springs has. Working in Denver, working with people, you have a reputation of being very intolerant, and it really hurts my feelings when I hear people tell me that. I ask them if they will come down here and participate or do anything that's going on down here, and they say no. Why? Because Colorado Springs is intolerant. This is time for you guys to relook at this. You need to relook at how that you're approaching this and how that you govern here, instead of just saying no, let's figure out a way to do it. We're smart, we're Colorado. The next thing people ask me is, what would you tell the kids about marijuana? I say the same thing. No until you're 21, unless you have a medical reason. We need to tell that message over and over. They ask about driving and smoking. I say the same thing. We need to start a campaign, we need to tell people. It's simple, don't tow and drive. That's the message we need to send. We need to send it over and over and over. And by banning it, what we're doing is creating a problem, because it will be available, it will be on the streets, and I'll tell you, the amount of kids that know how to grow it and how to do it is astonishing. It's there, it'll always be there, it's been there since I was in high school, and I went to Mitchell, and I went to Emerson, and I remember then, it was just as prevalent, and you can get it day after day. We need to create a regulation system where we take it off the streets. I have a guy that I talked to when he was 14, his name was Joey, and he was a dealer out on the street. I talked to him about it, and when medical came on, he lost his business. He could no longer make a profit because we regulated it and we created a situation where it was safer. It's time for Colorado Springs to overcome that reputation of being intolerant and create a regulation that's reasonable, with the voices of the people heard, and we need to create something where Colorado Springs, I'm proud of. Please, please, opt in in this, create regulation, use the things that you have, the tools that you have, that you've created, and the voices of the people to create something what they voted for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. Ron Nixon, followed by Terry Robnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Ron Nixon. I'm a native Coloradan, and I'm a cannabis consumer. On November 7th, 2012, I decided to become an educated cannabis consumer. At that point in time, I began attending all of the Amendment 64 Task Force meetings, a large number of the working groups, all of the sessions of the Joint Select Committee of the Legislature, and all of the legislative hearings. At the end of all of that, I learned some things, and that is that we have common ground. All of us, pro-cannabis or against cannabis, that came out of all of that adventure, would agree that it is in our best interest and our responsibility to protect children, to protect our public safety and health, and keep cannabis out of the hands of criminals. And I suggest to you today that the best way to accomplish that is to regulate marijuana. The legislature has set up a pathway for you to do that and minimize the community impact by a lot of very serious controls. Those controls for youth prevention include tamper-resistant packaging, packaging regulations, identification requirement, and universal symbols. That list goes on. Let me tell you, from having listened to the development of that list, it's long and bordering on onerous, but it protects our children. Let's talk about the impact controls and safeguards for our community. All dispensaries must have double-access entry. The laws provide for dual-purpose facilities, which creates a pathway for the good actors in the industry to move forward. The double-access entry and dosage limitations, product labeling, and contaminant testing will all help to protect our communities. Your charge as city council is to implement the time, place, and manner restrictions for which the legislature has given you large latitude. As far as community impact is concerned, I'd also like to speak for just a moment about access, and talking about the military. Given the robust unregulated black market that has persisted throughout history, access is easy. If access is the issue then, as some military people have told you today, then order and discipline is already an issue, and I don't think any of us has seen that borne true. Let's talk about the unintended consequences of a ban or a moratorium. A vote for a ban is a vote for supporting diversion in the black market. Colorado has a black, Colorado has a robust, unregulated black market. I was 16 years old in Fort Morgan, Colorado, a high school student, when I was able to buy an ounce of marijuana, a five-finger bag of Colombian gold for $50 in my schoolyard. It was true in 1976, and it's been true in every decade since. I urge you, vote for regulation.
Sorry, Mr. Nixon, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next is Terry Robnett, followed by Paul Sefello, it looks like?
Good evening, council members, and thank you for allowing me to be here to speak this evening. My name is Terry Robnett. I am a Colorado native. I'm a wife, I'm a mother of one, I'm a stepmother of four, those four happen to live here in Colorado Springs, and I'm a grandmother of two. I'm also a fibromyalgia patient, which I developed in 1987, and I'm a registered medical marijuana patient, but that didn't happen until 2009. I'm also the founder of the Cannabis Patients Action Network, and I'm the newest board member for Colorado Normal, the national organization for the reform of marijuana laws. First, I just want to thank you for doing the work here and for considering an option other than a ban, because really bans are, in my opinion, lazy policymaking. You know, it's a lot easier to just implement a ban than it is to do these regulations. That takes a lot of work. And so I appreciate and applaud you for being willing to do the work, and that's what your voters expect from you. They expect more than just a simple ban from you. They voted in favor of Amendment 64, and as their representatives, it is your responsibility now to take that and develop reasonable regulations. It's my understanding that the unemployment rate in Colorado Springs is running just short of 10%. And I was actually rather distressed a couple years ago when I heard that you were having to turn out streetlights because of budget problems. One of our kids down here is a girl, and I was really concerned about her safety with no streetlights, and I hear you're still 200 police officers down. Medical marijuana generated a significant amount of revenue, $5 million in tax revenue for the state, $1.1 million in Colorado Springs, and just under $1 million in El Paso County. And that's on $35 million in sales. And that's at a tax rate of 2.9% for the state, that $5 million tax rate, sales tax revenue. So there's definitely money there, and I feel it is more than sufficient, it will be more than sufficient, to support any regulation or enforcement. Colorado Normal opposes a ban to retail recreational marijuana in Colorado Springs. It's the organization's position that we all want consumers to have safe access to cannabis in Colorado Springs. This is a public safety issue, just like having the streetlights out, this is a public safety issue. I don't want my kids, I don't want anybody having to go to the black market, having to go to the dealer, to the gangs to get their cannabis. Now, typically, I'm a patient advocate, that's how most people know me, and they wonder why I'm here speaking for recreational. Our medical program only recognizes eight conditions that qualify someone to use medical marijuana, when it has been shown to be treated, treatment for over 200.
Ms. Robnett, thanks.
Please, I encourage you to opt in. Thank you.
Please, feel free to always send us an email with any additional information, okay? That sounds great. Next is Paul Sefello, followed by Joseph Terrell. Is Paul here? Here he comes. No? Well, you had your chance there, coming right up there. So Paul is not here? What about Joseph Terrell? Okay, Joseph, please come on up, and he'll be followed by Susan Peters.
Thank you, City Council. I just wanted to tell you, I have PTSD. I was in a tragic accident at work last year in which someone burned alive in front of me. You're never the same again after those situations. I don't know how they deal with that in the military, but I know a lot of veterans here have a problem with PTSD, and cannabis works. People are using cannabis to treat that, and it's helping in ways that are remarkable, better than alcohol, better than the pills. And I just ask you today to consider having safe access for our veterans and for people who go through traumatic events to have a way to cope with that. Thank you.
Joseph, thank you for being here. Susan Peters, followed by Dave Waugh.
Hi, I'm Susan Peters. The decision we make on this critical public policy issue end up defining the future of our city, and will have important implications for all of El Paso County, the rest of Colorado, et cetera. In the three minutes I have with you, I need to be direct. I know that you have admirable priorities for the city, sound fiscal policies, public safety, economic growth, build community and quality- safety, economic growth, build community and quality of life. I know you have heard from a number of your trusted experts on just a few of the potential pitfalls of opting in, including reductions in the military questioning their commitment to a city that provides a hostile work environment for them. Four major law enforcement associations, including our sheriffs, our police chiefs and our district attorneys, express serious concern about safety, public safety. County, Douglas County, has opted out and the quote from one of their spokesmen was, "We don't want that kind of revenue here." And here we are in a community where we have significant dependence on the military, on tourism and Castle Rock and Douglas County don't. And I just find it amazing that we so cavalierly disregard the actual basis of our economic prosperity. Some of you have a more challenging decision. The vote in your areas would appear to be a mandate to opt in. But in talking to many, many voters, I have learned, as I am sure you have, the wording was very misleading and many people are under some misperceptions. Some think they already voted in a tax. They believe all the promises made in that amendment are guarantees. And if they find those guarantees to be hollow, they're going to be pretty unhappy voters. What they can depend on is that you have the six months and more time to do your research. I would urge you to opt out. And if, for those of you who don't feel you have the information to make that decision at this time, I would ask you to consider the choice of a moratorium, delaying your decision while you do the following. Have the courage to ask the difficult decisions, the willingness to do the necessary unbiased information gathering and analysis, the patience to proceed with caution and care and all the while engaging the public in every step of the decision-making process. Your constituents believe in you, trust in you. They know that you will provide the much-needed leadership on this issue and together, searching for the best answers for Colorado Springs, we will prevail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Susan. Next is Dave Waugh, followed by Ross Long.
Good morning, or good evening, City Council people. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is David Waugh. I moved to Colorado about two months ago and became a resident. And I, I'm coming to speak to you because when I was growing up and, you know, I remember about, you know, maybe six years ago and I had some friends that wanted to get involved with, you know, drugs and alcohol. And whenever people wanted to find alcohol, it was always extremely hard to get because no adult would go to the store and buy alcohol because they knew the serious consequences of providing a minor with alcohol. At least that's where I grew up. But if you wanted marijuana, on the other hand, anyone in the black market, everyone had friends you could call, like seven, eight people, like, and anyone would gladly help you out. So I am a current student at the University of Colorado in Colorado Springs and I'm studying biology education. I've always deeply cared about our students and their education. And it really bothers me to think that right now, kids have easy access to drugs on the black market in Colorado Springs. I'm asking you today to help cripple that black market. To me, it seems crazy that we have federal laws that are failing to protect our children. Back before 1776, there were laws that didn't protect our people either. And some people met in Philadelphia and decided that those laws needed to change. I'm asking you to do the same thing today.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks for being here. Ross Long, followed by Lawrence Martinez.
Good evening. Thank you for having such a participatory sort of government. There's few places, I've lived in other large communities, that do not allow the hoi polloi to come talk to you. And I do appreciate that. I'd like to talk to you just a minute about public monies. Let's talk about, we need public monies here in Colorado Springs. It's needed for schools, firefighting, increased salaries for police. We need more police officers. We need more money for firefighters and other government employees, perhaps even yourselves. So, oh, so I know, I know. Oh, shut up, shut up. Okay. I haven't heard much about tourist dollars. Colorado Springs is a great haven for tourists. No, not in the wintertime. We're not really close to ski areas, but I'm hoping to see more tourist dollars. We've lost tourist dollars because of the fire down there at the Royal Gorge. We're going to lose, we're just not going to see those dollars this year, this season. I would hope that, I believe that if you allow medical, not medical marijuana, but recreational marijuana, it will bring more tourist dollars from all over the country. The Fish Eye, the Fish Bowl is on Colorado and Colorado Springs right now. They are watching us and I say, let's make as best example as we can. I would vote, I would hope that you would vote to opt in. Do not break faith with the voters and let's expand and not contract liberty. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ross. Lawrence Martinez, followed by Jessica Hogan.
Well, City Council, President, I hope you guys are all doing well. I'd come up and shake some hands, but President King knows how that works. I met all of you guys at the Elmar Foundation. I'm part of the Elmar Emerging Leaders Program. I've been a community leader now for the last six, seven years. Leadership Pike Speaks, Center for Creative Leadership, Leadership Planning. I do a program called Inversion. I work with kids before they fall into the judicial system. I also give a drug class at Spring Creek. You know, I hear about the kids and I hear about the cartel. So I went to the kids that I work with and I asked them. I said, now that you'll be 21, you'll be able to get yourself an ounce and won't worry about it. They tell me, hey, I can get announced now and not worry about it. So they're not waiting to be 21 to get it. Working with the kids over there at the Spring Creek, it's really incredible. I've got some kids over there that are economically very aware of how marijuana produces money for them. Had a young man who could break down an ounce all the way down to a quarter. This man was smart enough to know not to sell his stuff and wait for everybody else to sell theirs out, then sell his at a premium price. He's 16. So you can imagine how many other younger dealers out there like that. Marijuana isn't one of their favorite things to do. It's ecstasy, coke, little bit of heroin. That's what they're mostly doing now. I mean, I can take you guys down for these kids to have, you know, sit with me with these classes. I also went and talked to the people of the cartel. I went down to a lot of the Spanish drinking establishments and talked with them. And if you guys would ever like to talk with them, I'm sure they'd talk with you. Well, they're hoping you will put a moratorium and they hope you will decide to step out because, you know, you're hurting their business, very much so. In fact, they asked me to tell you, they hope you do that. You know, the military, I'm prior military, honorable discharge. I signed that piece of paper stating I'm not going to do drugs and I made sure I didn't. So, you know, I can sit at a place over there on the south end of Academy where the income is very low. You'd be surprised how many kids are out there just waiting for cars to roll by just so they can do their sales. Now they have people who are 21 to do the sales because if the officer pulls up, they're not going to get in any trouble and they're not asking for IDs. So I do hope you guys decide, you know, instead of just waiting to do something, we do something way ahead of time. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Lawrence. Jessica Hogan, followed by Dr. Margaret, it looks like co-ed?
Well, thank you so much for having this meeting tonight. We definitely appreciate the time to come out and speak with you. I know it's late, so I'll try to stay on point. My name's Jessica Hogan. I'm the director of Vibrant Health Clinic. We're a holistic clinic here in Colorado Springs. We primarily do medical cannabis evaluations and we've been in business almost three years now. So we see a lot of patients and we're here on behalf of our patients. I'm surprised we haven't heard more from the patients. But anyways, I've been taking some notes and I do have some packets for you guys. Dr. Getty, our doctor will be speaking after me and she has some information in here for you as well. It's right over there. First thing is, we definitely have a unique perspective with patients. We're not a dispensary, no medication on site. The patients are with us about an hour and a half, sometimes two hours, and they get a lot of time to really open up. They get the private room with the doctor, private room with our consultant and notary and they really open up. And this is a very hot topic for patients. They're very concerned that they're going to lose their medical centers. And this is up to the dispensaries, of course, to decide how they want to do their business model after you guys decide how that will be. But they're really concerned about keeping it in the same location. Patients want to be patients. They don't want to be associated as a recreational user. They're using this as a medication and they're getting tremendous results. A lot of our patients are off of most of their pharmaceuticals. I'm sure you saw the Gazette story about Charlotte and she's off of her pharmaceuticals. You know, so it's just amazing what cannabis can do. There is a huge difference between patients and recreational users. So it's very important that you guys keep the separation, however that looks, in the regulations. The other point that is a big concern for patients is patient privacy. We do have to follow HIPAA regulations at the doctor's office. The dispensaries are also supposed to follow HIPAA as well. Patients do expect this when they go in to pick up their medication. They, a lot of patients we talk to don't like the centers where you go in and there's 10 other people in the room. They want to be private. They want to talk about their condition. They want to talk about how it's working for them. They don't want to stand in line or in the same waiting area as recreational users who just want to get high. How high can I get? How much THC can I get? Our patients are asking, how high of a CBD strain can I get because it's stopping my seizures? It's anti-cancer. It's anti-pain. It's everything. So that's very important to consider, making sure patients stay covered under HIPAA. And I'm sure you're familiar with the different models. We do have a printout about some main clips and House Bill 1317 in our packet for you. But with the dual purpose, patients are afraid. Oh, it's up there.
Sorry, Jessica, but thank you.
So I could go on and on, but thank you.
We'll let Dr. Margaret Getty finish for you and followed by John Hershey.
Thank you.
Hurstberg.
Hurstberg, thank you.
Hello, thank you, Council members. I am Dr. Margaret Getty and the question, so unlike, I think, just about everybody else, Jessica and I aren't here necessarily to urge you to opt in or to opt out. We're speaking for the patients. I am a physician in Colorado. My MD and PhD are from Stanford. I have background in research and pathology. I'm currently specializing in medical cannabis. And we see patients every week just to fill in and follow up on what Jessica was saying. So the patients, what's happening now is working, okay? The medical marijuana centers in Colorado Springs are a public good. So I urge you to consider them in any regulations you make to protect the patient experience. Patients are able to use topical rubs. They're able to get tinctures and specialized strains. They're able to get the high CBD strains that don't get people high, but they relieve pain and they stop seizures and spasms. Sorry. So I urge you to look at a model that will let the medical marijuana centers stay in business. They will have a huge competitive pressure from recreational centers, but the recreational centers can't serve the patients. So both are needed if you're going to consider opting in. So consider a model that will keep the experience for the patients, confidentiality. So separate product rooms probably, perhaps the same growth facilities for economic help to the producers. And in that, in those folders, just those three points, that the MMCs currently serve a significant good, that there is danger of damaging some good that is there now. And the models you look at, if you can keep the medical and the recreational separate in a model that will let the center owners to produce the marijuana and to provide it, you know, to the broader community as well, that's what we would urge you to do.
Thank you, Dr. Getty.
Thank you.
John Hurstberg, followed by Lance Lazoff.
Members of the Council, thank you. My name's John Paul Hurstberg. Three and a half years ago, I was shot twice by a 40 caliber Smith &amp; Wesson while implementing a Class II felony warrant in Phoenix, Arizona. My doctors all put me on morphine, Dilaudid. I'm going to talk differently. I'm not about the money here. I'm about the patient and I'm about medical use of it because that's why I moved from Arizona to here. You took me from my home state because of the laws that were passed here. I'm buying a house. I'm bringing revenue into the city. I have a great medical team. My entire psychiatrist team approves of medical marijuana. I did it recreationally as well, not on the job. Okay? I can take this that I get for 40 bucks or I can take Schedule II narcotics, which are a dollar at Walgreens. I can take eight Xanax a day, eight Percocet a day. I will end up in a frickin' methadone clinic in four years taking that dose, if not less, if I don't die. These are what our kids want.
Hey, Mr. Hurstberg.
These are what my kids, my 19-year-old, their friends want this stuff. They don't ask me for this stuff because I keep it in my safe. I'm a responsible adult. We must look at this from a proactive view. As 21, we can buy a firearm. Does a firearm kill people? People kill people. Same concept. I'm here about the medicinal value because I've been diagnosed, I'm on 100% SSDI. Chronic PTSD, I can't go grocery shopping. I can't be around, this is tough enough being around a lot of people. So I can live on this and abuse it because eventually I will get to a plateau and have to take more. That is a medical, any doctor will admit that. You will plateau on this stuff and I will have to take more. Am I going to be 80 taking lethal dosages of this stuff? Do I need to worry about my kids breaking in my safe, stealing these when they don't want this because they can already get this? This is the stuff they want, not this. I'm, I support and I hope you guys do opt in for this. I think it's right for the community and I think it's right for the people. Obviously, we have economic majors that can deal with the money and the taxation of this. I feel as members of the Council, your job is to deal with the people. Economics come later. Businesses have their business plans, just like lawyers have their briefs and, you know, whatever they do in court, ready. So that's what your time is here for. You know, how do you structure this? I'm just here to say as a user, it has saved my life because I don't take these. I take this now.
Thank you, Mr. Hurstberg. We really appreciate you being here. Lance Lazoff, followed by Ryan Newton. Mr. Lazoff? Okay. Ryan Newton, followed by Sam Hampton, it looks like.
Thank you all for your time, attention and for your service to our community. My name is Ryan Newton. I'm a small business owner. I work, I own Newton Computer Works. We're an IT consulting firm for corporations. We do do some work with the public. However, we operate under Max Electronics when it comes to dealing with the public. What I've seen so far, when it comes to moving out, when it comes to any kind of business being established in Colorado, I don't think I've ever heard a single business owner tell me that they wanted to not go to Colorado because of the marijuana. In fact, I actually came to Colorado from California because of the marijuana. It's a huge business opportunity, especially in my business. I set up maintenance contracts with business owners of all kinds and I'd definitely like to see a new industry step forward. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Sam Hampton, followed by Tom McManam? Oh, there you are.
Yeah, hi. Thank you all.
You could have been Paul an hour.
You made me laugh. Thank you. Yeah, I'm Sam Hampton. I'm thinking medical-wise. I was in a car wreck. A guy, 5:00 in the morning totaled my car. I have three torn nerve roots in my back. And I'm from Tempe, Arizona. I didn't know him though. But I'm, no, professionally, I'm a million mile driver. So I've had cities invite me out, show me a bus route, give me a sign on bonus and I've done that. That's, the deal was when I got injured this last time. So again, I stand here with three torn nerve roots in my back, my knees are shot and I'm almost 50 years old and I'm facing disability. So the thing with the cannabis recreational-wise, I have participated and it helps my left, right thalamus in my brain. I find myself at ease using cannabis. And again, I'm 48 years old. It was always around growing up in suburban Chicago, as someone touched on earlier. Again, it was always around and people are different, but for me, it really helps me and I'm happy to be here. This is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom McManam, followed by Mike Palmer.
Lot of esteemed and very eloquent people you've all listened to. You must be bored to death. They've come up with some very valid and a lot of points I would have to agree with. agree with. But I do believe that most of us moot, so we're irrelevant. In November, the people have spoken. They've already told you what they want. And I realize that the amendment gave you the opportunity to opt out. But I do believe that that opportunity was to represent a situation like Douglas County. The people clearly voted against it there. So the county, very impetuously, I believe, decided to opt out. I believe that in all due respect, you have the mandate to follow what the will of the people is. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Tom. Mike Palmer, followed by Scott Anderson.
I'm Mike Palmer, and I do appreciate this time. I'm going to approach this, again, a little different than what some of the other folks have talked about. Several years ago, I was a juror on a murder trial here in the Springs. It started with a graduate of, I believe, Mitchell High School, who may or may not have participated in the drug culture locally, we don't know. She went up to UCCS and got heavily involved. By October of her freshman year, she was recruited as a dealer locally. By the middle of the next semester, she was doing $22,000 worth of business a month. The dealer, the big man up in Denver, was fingered to the FBI or the whoever, the feds. He thought she did it. He sent his henchmen down here to take care of this problem. Sounds like something out of a movie happened here in Colorado Springs. These guys, during testimony, said that they went to the plat Walmart and they argued over what kind of a dumbbell to buy to kill her with. This is in our community. It was, it is, and it will be if you don't do something about it. They made a business appointment with her at her condo up on North Academy. They waited until they were really involved in business. One of them walked behind her and beat her to death with this dumbbell. And then, then to finish it off, they strangled her with a towel, left her nude in her own tub. It is here, it will be here. I would ask you guys to regulate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Scott Anderson, followed by Ed Anderson. Scott Anderson? Oh, here he comes.
Hello again to all members of council. I'm a mental health patient, physical health patient. I have plastic caps, I have bipolar, I have Tourette's Syndrome. My doctor sits right over there. She knows I need to be heavily medicated for society's protection to be able to deal with the stupid I see on the streets, everywhere. It's sad. And I'm going to tell you this much right now. When we passed Amendment 64, we passed it based on the factor that people were blindsided by the factor we were going to have $40 million for education. It's the only thing I thought was worthwhile to vote for it, and I didn't because I knew it was going to get sidelined. 40 million in education, hmm, that's like a million dollars per school. Teachers could get quarter million dollar salaries a year. We need to educate. You're not going to get rid of this. Last week, I had to get my bag out of a 21-year-old kid because there's only one dispensary in the Grand Valley and you have to hit it by appointment only. I deal with severe antisocial situations. I don't like being around society because it's killing itself off with alcohol. I have a problem with it. I have run a business in this town. I have made money. And the sad thing is, is the kids have more access to this stuff that's killing us than we do. I made my living having to be a dope dealer because we couldn't regulate it properly. I'm a patient because I want to follow the laws. And I'm trying to say, if we can't educate our kids by choice, if we can't educate by past experience, knowing you're not going to get rid of it, what are we really going to do? We're going to listen to the voters? Or we're just going to let government decide it? You know, all the day, I've heard about education and the money. One thing I want to know about is this. Why is it that the kids have more access and it's everywhere than the patients do? I can get it easier that way. And why is it in life that when we have a chance to show the rest of the country out there that we can do something to stop the violence, stop the crime, stop everything going on, and find a better way to monitor all this? We could solve the problems and be a model for the rest of the country. You have a chance. We took moratoriums and we took it out of the Western slopes and I had to move back here because of the fact it's the only place I can feel safe. I don't like having to sell dope either. I don't want to have to give my bag away, my medicine away. It's the stuff that keeps me sane from watching Vicodins get sold on my streets for less than my pot, less than the tinctures I use.
Scott, thank you very much for coming tonight. Next is Ed Anderson. I think that might be General Anderson who's already spoken. And next would be Dr. Leo Nassenbaum, who I think is who has already been here. Next is Matthew J. Hughes, followed by James Van Deest.
Hello, council members. My name is Matthew Hughes. I just moved here from the state of New York. I'm a refugee from the state. I've always been a recreational user. I have a five-year-old daughter. And I'll tell you the truth, I wanted to be free. I came here for that purpose. I want you guys to open up the recreational market for people like me. There's lots of people out there who work jobs, who go to school every day. They do their things. Leave us alone. I just want to live my life. Please, vote for recreational stores and let us be free. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next is James Van Deest, followed by Tom Gallagher.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm James Van Deest. I'm a retired Presbyterian elder, I'm a retired fireman, and I own several dispensaries. In opening, we're here at a very exciting time and we have the chance to regulate and take an orderly manner to regulate and use this in a progressive manner, or we can watch it, the world evolve around us, and we have no input. It'll, my dispensary in Littleton is the major beneficiary of Douglas County's refusal to have them. I get a lot of business from people that come up from dispensary. As Mayor Box's good friend John Medved said, "It's only a few minutes up I-25. If you don't want it here, they'll go up to Denver to get it. The military will go up to Denver to get it." If we can have it here, we can regulate it, we can tax it here, or we can watch our money go to Denver. We can watch our money go to the Mexican cartels. It's up to us, but if we do this in an orderly, in a regulatory manner, it'll benefit all of us and it'll eliminate the law enforcement side of it. And with all due respect to fire chief, I've went on hundreds of ambulance calls. We never had one overdose on marijuana. I can't tell you how many trips I went out on alcohol or other drug overdoses or car wrecks dealing with alcohol and other drugs. And again, the chief of police's reference and the chief, the fire chief's reference, they lumped marijuana with other drugs. Let's eliminate marijuana with these other drugs and marijuana is cannabis. It's legal. These other drugs aren't. So let's deal with the legality of what we have legal here and let the police and the law enforcement deal with these illegal drugs and let them enforce the law. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Tom Gallagher, followed by Ed Tower.
Good evening. My name is Tom Gallagher. I live at 109 East Brookside. I'm here to encourage you to exercise your home rule authority, because the answer is in the middle ground. Amendment 20 gave birth to Senate Bill, or House Bill 1284, and created a regulatory model for the retail sales of marijuana. And this city adopted those standards three, a little over three years ago. We started seeing retail sales in Colorado Springs. This spring, for some unknown reason, the state decided to create a second regulatory model for marijuana that is not as good. It throws patients under the bus and understand that patients, responsible patients, responsible owners, okay, made it possible for the passage of Amendment 64. What rolled out of 1317 is not what the people voted for. The people voted for the retail model that they had, which is a 1284 model. Part of the permitting process is a finding of good character. Under 1284, you can't have anything remotely resembling a felony. Under 1317, well, those are lesser felonies. But when a judge can turn to a jury and say, "I'm sorry, but that's a fact that you can use to assess moral character", shouldn't be. I mean, 1317 just should not be. A lot's been said about scientific study. To study marijuana legally in this country, you have to first get a permit from the National Institute of Drug Abuse. To get that permit, you have to first sign a statement showing that there will be no beneficial aspect of marijuana. It's a federal law. Marijuana can only be studied as a substance of abuse, which is why you have to expand your scope and look at the international study, because in the United States, it's a preconceived outcome. I don't know what the answer is. It's your job. We voted you in to figure this out for us. What I do know is we have a high-functioning, what is nationally recognized as the most efficient regulatory model for marijuana in the country. What I do know is that the community that can figure this one out is going to ride a wave because it's trending all over the country. It's not just Colorado, it's the nation as a whole. And more fundamentally, it's an issue of right and wrong. Okay? Is this a government that serves and respects the will of the people, or is this a government that's going to dictate? You know, it's not like Colorado Springs has had this question on one ballot. No, in the last 15 years, it's been on the ballot four times. Okay? And we've passed three. The legalized state measure failed because it was poorly written the first time around. Don't be afraid of it.
Thanks for being here. Your voice has been well heard on this topic. Ed Tower?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. President, council members. Thank you for having this forum this evening, and in particular, thank you for your patience. It's been a long time and you've each been very attentive and it really shows in the audience, so thank you. My name is Ed Tower. I work with a company called Livwell that has two dispensaries in Colorado Springs. And we believe that if you're going to be a business in a community, you have to try and help address the issues in that community. And one of the things that we've heard tonight is there's this new thing coming up, adult-use marijuana, and people have legitimate concerns about what's going to happen. And one of the things we can do is look at how can we have a partnership between some of the businesses in the community that are already in the medical marijuana business and the city and say, how do we address some of these issues? Let's not just list concerns, let's talk about how to address the concerns. And as just one example this evening, I want to touch on the military issue that's been brought up. One of the things that we would suggest is that Colorado Springs could adopt in its ordinance that in each adult-use dispensary, you have to have a sign, either at the door or behind the counter, that's prominent, that says clearly, "The Uniform Code of Military Justice prohibits military personnel from possessing or using marijuana. For that reason, the city of Colorado Springs supports its military. It is not legal for this business to sell to military personnel." In addition, you can require businesses to ask at the time of sale, is the person who's buying marijuana a member of the active military? And if not, say, "We're not going to sell to you." And you can enforce this, which is a big issue, a regulation without enforcement doesn't count, the same way that you enforce that liquor stores can't sell to underage people. There's a lot of detail to this, but the point that I'd like to bring up is, let's talk about not just what are some of the concerns, but together say, how do we address some of those concerns and make Colorado Springs a visionary city that has got the history of doing already? And so I'm going to stay under my three minutes. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tower. Next is Walt Cooper, followed by Brooke Squires. And, Mr. Cooper, I just want to say, I believe you're associated with School District 12?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we realized that it may have been an oversight of ours as we invited different groups to attend earlier to speak on topics from sort of areas within the community that we seem to overlook our local school districts. And so I want you to know how much we appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And sometimes it's good to be overlooked, so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President King, and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to make a few comments. I'm not here to advocate a specific position, either to ban or opt in, and I'll be the first to admit, I have no real concept of the larger-scale issues and myriad perspectives before you on this issue. And my comments tonight are very limited in focus. I'm going to, and I'm going to maintain that focus on school discipline issues. And as Councilwoman Martin indicated, I presently serve as Superintendent of Cheyenne Mountain School District. And it's probably no surprise to any of you that confronting illegal drug and alcohol use by students is one of the most significant and difficult issues we face in public education. And due to what I believe are very strict and appropriate rules governing student drug use and alcohol use in virtually every school district in this state, most instances of use result in either out-of-school suspension or further result in expulsion of students for up to a calendar year. And I don't think it takes a career educator to understand that having kids out of school is in no one's best interest. That said, we've had a very strong track record of decreasing the number of disciplinary incidents resulting from drug, alcohol, and tobacco in Colorado schools during the 10 years beginning in 2000. And I have copies that I left with Ms. Cox for you to review later. I have copies of a graphic representation of this data from the Colorado Department of Education. But in 2009, 2010, that trend reversed dramatically. Colorado schools reported an increase in incidents of nearly 34% over the previous school year and drug-related expulsions rose 40%. While this data is not restricted to marijuana use, we know from sources like Healthy Kids Colorado and the Developmental Assets Review that marijuana is far and away the prevalent drug among our youth, outpacing others by about four to one. And expanding on some comments by Deputy Chief Niski, research like that from the University of Michigan shows that adolescent use does directly correlate to two things, accessibility to the drug and social acceptance of its use. And so subsequently, authors of a relative study to this data from CDE would make the general assertion that that spike coincided with the timeframe that saw the creation of legal marijuana dispensaries opening across the state, especially because this data did not follow national trends. Now, I would never make that assertion, and I want to make it clear that this is not an indictment on the medical marijuana industry. But I think that much like liquor stores, those that follow the rules have very little control over their product once it leaves their stores. And so I simply...
Mr. Cooper, I'm sorry, you are...
I simply urge you and offer that we will help further this data from, on behalf of K-12, if you would like to look at that. Regardless of which way you go, please consider the data.
Thank you. Brooke Squires. Brooke will be followed by Ella Crane.
My name is Brooke Squires. I live in Don Knight's district. I want to thank you for this forum. My concern is the voters of Colorado stated that this, that they've approved Amendment 64. And as we all know, when you vote for an amendment, you want to see this come to conclusion. You want to see the city council pass it, you don't want to see them obstruct it. This is why we have the voting process. We know from our recall in our area that because people aren't getting their way, they're going to recall. No, the people have voted and this is what we want. Last year, my husband took me to a football game. Notre Dame playing Brigham Young University. As I'm sitting there with my husband and his five friends from Brigham Young, WAC champions, they're 65 and they were WAC champions in '65. And four of them were accepting the fact that Notre Dame was winning the game. One of them, his head was spinning. He was turning into a two-headed monster because the football game wasn't going his way. way. A few years before that, we moved back from Jacksonville, Florida, where my husband had a major command down there. And he let our girls vote. Where do you want to go? Do we go back to our home in the Springs? Or do we go back to our home in San Diego? Our girls won. Perhaps Monty didn't get his way in the last part of his career, but he came back here and he never pitched a fit, didn't turn into a monster. Just my question is, are you going to do the right thing and support this amendment, or are you going to get your nose out of joint and do the wrong thing? Today, I was at my oncologist, and I have no horse in this race, really, but I'm watching several infirm and immobile people, and they need the cannabis over the medication. And perhaps we're lucky right now, but will we always be lucky? What about our caregivers? We're going to make them drive out of the county to buy cannabis? I don't think that's what we should do. I think we should respect the voters of the state of Colorado. Thanks.
Thank you, Brooke. Ella Crane, followed by Matt. And Matt, I'm having a hard time reading your name. It looks like Mormon? Yeah, okay. Ella?
Good evening, City Council. My name's Ella Crane, and I'm here as a former District 11 student. I want to address three things that I learned in public school in Colorado Springs. One, there is no lack of need for more funding, and I think that this bill will enable the schools to hopefully provide more resources for the public students that, you know, I know that I needed when I was there, as two of my three schools were renovated while I was attending. Two, I had a very comprehensive education in drug use from my peers, so don't worry, they're getting it. And three, I learned about government. And when I read that the will of the people might be overturned, and we would ban retail sales here in Colorado Springs, I would be absolutely ashamed to live in a city that did that with the will of the people. I believe that it's very important to our generation, my generation, the people that I dragged to the voting polls this year, to set the standard of, you know, if you vote for it, we'll do it, even if we don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ella. Matt? I'm not even going to try, Matt. Tell us who you are when you get up here. And he'll be followed by Delbert Scaglio.
Hello, City Council. My name is Matt Mormon. I own one of the centers in Colorado Springs. I guess first talking point would be the notion that the voters were misled on the campaign to regulate marijuana like alcohol. It's pretty simple and set in stone when you say, "The campaign to regulate marijuana like alcohol." I don't believe there's any voter misleading information in there. The other thing would be the military notion that they're going to leave our city because of marijuana becoming legal, and because it's financially better to go to another state. The fact of the matter is, if people have to move from state to state to state, it's going to cost billions and billions and billions of dollars to move. I would ask you to opt-in with a medical and recreational situation to where we can provide access to the patients and also provide access to a recreational user over 21. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt Mormon. Next is Delbert Scaglio, and followed by Joel Stanley. Here, Amy, right behind you there, we'll do that for you.
Can you just follow through? Is Amy available? Yeah. Can you go ahead? I'm going to go through.
I'll start with that one on the top, yes, please. Could you get the whole thing in, or no? Hello, my name's Delbert Scaglio. I own multiple marijuana businesses in your city. I have a question for all of you. How many of you would go home right now, tear the transmission out of your car, and rebuild it in your kitchen? Anyone? Of course not. You do not possess the knowledge or tools to do a satisfactory job. We know we're all here trying to do a good job. There's lots of reasons right now that I would not allow recreational stores in the city of Colorado Springs. I'm just going to cover one thing: the flawed laws. People who wrote these laws should have hired an expert. There's no legal place to consume the drug, not in bars, not in public. There's nowhere for the tourists to use the drug. Of course, as soon as they buy the drug, it's going to be burning a hole in their pocket. The use will be in our parks, it'll be in our neighborhoods, it'll be in front of our children, as the number-one place they'll be using in the car. I compare it to cigarettes. Our DUI law is so flawed, it's worthless. THC makes you high, it makes you see good, it makes you be creative. CBD is another compound in marijuana. It's more like a muscle relaxer. If I ate a CBD edible 30 minutes ago, I'd be on the ground right now, unable to move. The five-nanogram test does not test for CBD. Therefore, it will not detect impaired drivers. However, we have a bigger issue. You can't even enforce your DUI laws. You ask why you can't enforce them? Missouri versus McNeely. Involuntary specimens for blood alcohol testing without a search warrant is unreasonable seizure, a violation of the Fourth Amendment, April 17, 2013. You're going to allow thousands of drug drivers into our state from other states, from other countries, on the same streets as your daughters, your grandparents, and your mothers. They don't even know their way around, and there's nothing you can do to them. Your law has no teeth. Are you scared yet? Could you flip over and go to the next page? If anything, I want you to read the top of the page. That's what Denver's doing right now. They may be opting into it, but they're not allowing new players. They're only allowing existing dispensaries. I'm asking for a two-year moratorium, and you're asking me why so long? Research takes time. In 1938--
Sorry, Delbert, but thank you for the information. Joel Stanley, followed by Terry Bitzel.
Hello, Council. My name is Joel Stanley. Thank you for giving this issue due time and taking public comment. I went to school here, Colorado Springs Christian School. I went to the University of Colorado, Colorado Springs. I currently grow cannabis for one of the dispensaries here in town. One of our most notable patients was featured in the Gazette, and a couple of commenters brought her up, Little Charlotte. I was quoted in the Gazette as having said that about 70% of our crop is non-psychoactive. That's true. So I don't consider myself as someone who really has much to gain by the recreational market. I don't use cannabis, medicinally or recreationally. At the same time, living here, raising my kids here, I don't want another reason for us to say, "Why did we vote?" Regardless of how I voted on Amendment 64, I don't want another reason for us to throw our hands in the air and say, "Why did we go to the polls?" And, you know, it was a clear margin. It wasn't huge, but Colorado Springs did vote to regulate and tax like alcohol. The opt-out, I think we all understand, is there for the county, as someone else mentioned, sorry to be repetitive, like Douglas County. We're not a county or a city like that. It did pass here. So I ask that you would listen to the will of the people. And also, I want to back up some of the previous comments. Please do, in your efforts, find a way to protect what we're doing. We're doing amazing things. We're seeing amazing things through the use of medical marijuana, specifically the non-psychoactive CBD that will not leave you on the floor, by the way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joel. Terry Bitzel, followed by Tanya Garano.
Thank you for your time. My name is Terry Bitzel, and I've been a resident for 20-plus years, coming here via the military. I have been a responsible professional since I was 15, and if marijuana was legal, I might use it for pain management and PTSD responsibly and through edibles. I don't use it now, because I make choices accordingly as a responsible adult, just like our responsible soldiers would, who care about their careers and who abide by the rules put forth by the military. I absolutely feel that our vets, those who leave the military, would benefit from responsible use for PTSD-- I mean, excuse me-- from responsible use for PTSD and pain versus harmful addictive pharmaceuticals, as it helps calm the nerves from shell shock and memories, calms the brain, and helps them cope and manage their daily life challenges, instead of becoming suicidal and drugged up on pharmaceutical drugs given out by the VA. It is a fact that alcohol ruins lives and kills daily. I have never, ever known anyone to die or do anything harmful from just using marijuana. However, prescription drugs, hard drugs, alcohol, yes, absolutely. Please give adults, soldiers, and students credit for their decisions, their careers, for their responsible choices, and for their own lives, just like you are responsible for your own recreational drinking. Soldiers are very aware of the no-tolerance rules in drug tests. Please give them credit for managing their careers as you manage yours. With all due respect, please stop the ill-informed paranoia and fair tactics. The sky is not falling. I know growers and I know users, and they live quiet, responsible, and successful lives, and they pay their taxes. My question, has any one of you who is opposed to legalization ever used marijuana? It is not the harmful drug, unlike most pharmaceutical drugs, that you currently take from your doctor. And how many of you drink alcohol? How can you speak knowledgeably about something one knows nothing about personally, much less reverse the people's votes? How can one deny the voters' rights and a fair election based on misinformation, paranoia, and a lack of personal knowledge? Much-- excuse me-- much stated today has been based on speculation, based on fear, not reality. Medical marijuana places in town have not kept tourists away, neither would the retail stores, as it has not kept tourists away from Holland. Marijuana is not addictive in itself, unlike prescription drugs, illegal hard drugs, and alcohol. The only reason someone would become so-called addicted is if the person has an addictive personality. Fifty-- excuse me, 55% of the responsible voters have spoken. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Terry, for being here. Tanya, followed by Pat Hanson.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Garduno. I own two centers, one here in Colorado Springs, one in the City of Durango, and I'm also the president of the Colorado Springs Medical Cannabis Council. There are two main points that I've heard brought up over and over again, in addition to, of course, the array of studies saying this, studies saying that. But the two things I want to kind of comment on are marijuana is a Schedule I controlled substance. Now, basically, by that definition, that would imply that there's some sort of control. From what we've heard today, I'm pretty sure that it's not under control. And what we need to do is we need to start taking steps to maintain, to make sure that you guys put those control factors in place. Now, when we entered into the medical marijuana field, there were, of course, these same fears that came up, and so far, I have not grabbed any children off the streets, I have not kidnapped anyone out of their neighborhood and forced them to take cannabis, and I have no intention of doing so. I am a businessperson, I pay my taxes, and I try to be a good businessperson for you folks. The original ordinance that we came up with was far more strict than the one that's actually intact right now. And because of that, we went out and policed ourselves as an industry. In Denver, you had the sign flyers and the sign spinners. We went out as an industry, told those people to stop. You know, when we see things that are wrong, and we know that there's not a place for you guys to address them, we've gone out and addressed them ourselves, because we understand we want to be part of the community and not a hindrance on it. The other thing that I've heard is that you guys are leaders. Well, this council's leadership was reflected about three years ago, when they brought all of the community and industry, neighborhoods, pharmaceutical companies, building and housing folks, everybody into one spot, and let us sit down and have a conversation. There are so many more aspects of 64 that have been misinterpreted here, been given out as half-truths, and I think we need to sit down and actually analyze that, take this task force back, take a task force approach again, and make it happen. Now, I know that they've said that there's not a lot of time for this to happen, but believe me, we were told that before, and we made it happen. The people who are dedicated will be there. I was there for four days a week, facilitating four-hour meetings whenever I was able to. I was there the day before and the day after Thanksgiving, because that's the commitment that I have, and that's the commitment that these folks have, and that's why they're still here at 8:30 at night. So please, take the option to opt-in, give us the time to get this task force together, and let's show you that you guys can be the leaders that we always have been, and let us help you be those leaders by giving you the proper information from all aspects. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. I remember those were the good old days. Pat Hanson, followed by Kelsey Tyler. We are almost done. I think I count five people left.
Hello, President King, Chairwoman Martin, and City Council. My name is Pat Hanson, and I have lived in this community since 1970, when my military father moved here. He loved Colorado Springs so much, he retired here. So as I said, I've been here since 1970. I've worked at Memorial Hospital for 35 years. I'm a registered nurse. I've worked in critical care units, including coronary care, intensive care unit, the neonatal intensive care unit, and PACU, post-anesthesia care unit. I have three children, all of whom grew up here. Two went to Mitchell, and one went to Palmer High School. I am here to speak to opting in to this. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points that you've heard here. One is that the citizens of Colorado Springs and El Paso County have spoken. They have said that they want Amendment 64. It is dismaying to me to think that our votes would be discounted. When we cast our vote, we believe that we're in a democracy, and our votes are going to count. The second thing I want to speak to is the military aspect. We have talked, we've heard a lot from the military men, saying that if we legalize it, soldiers are going to start using it more. And I object to that. I think that our military men, our young men, are perfectly capable of making an informed decision. They are out there, after all, on the battlefields, making critical decisions all the time. Marijuana is available everywhere. Our soldiers make that decision every day. They know they can lose their careers. They know that there's, you know, consequences to that. As a comparison, I'm going to say, I work at Memorial Hospital, like I said, 35 years. We have drug testing. We are subject to termination if we are test positive. Marijuana is available, I could have used it these 35 years, right? And I've chosen not to. Legalizing it is not going to make me say, "Well, I'm going to go out now, and I'm going to start smoking, okay, or using." And I guess the last couple of things I want to say, because I know you guys have heard this, you know, many of these points, so I don't want to reiterate too much, but I am very concerned about the drug cartels. I've personally seen way too many cases, as a nurse and as a parent, of kids that have obtained drugs, marijuana that has been laced with methamphetamine and other more potent drugs. So I say, "Take the power away from the drug cartels, and let's regulate it." The last thing I want to say, and I don't have much information on this as far as statistics, but as an RN, I see chronic pain patients all the time that are getting benefit. And I know we have medical marijuana, but I think that marijuana should be used more in a lot of our cases, very ill patients. PTSD, absolutely. And I will say a comment to that, that I wish my father and stepfather, who both served in Vietnam and came back with severe PTSD, I would rather have seen them use marijuana than become the raging alcoholics they were. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Pat. Kelsey Tyler, followed by Liz Oldak.
Hello, thank you. So five years ago, a very important person said, "It's time to make a change." And I believe that today should be that day. I moved here in 2001 from Houston, Texas. I grew up in a sheltered home. I didn't see marijuana until I moved to Colorado, and that was on the school ground of North Middle School. So regulation and selling it in a store would be much better. Not everyone can afford medical marijuana paperwork, red cards. Not everyone can afford that. Some people can only afford their medication. Not everyone, you know, can afford certain things. I'm still a little confused on the license part of that, but I'll look into that myself. But you guys just need to make a change, that's all I have to say. Positive change.
Thank you very much, Kelsey. Liz Oldak?
Thank you, Council members. My name is Liz Oldak. I am chair of the El Paso County Libertarian Party Development Group. I am here on behalf of all libertarians in our county and our city. I will spare you facts and figures and present a libertarian stance on marijuana. Libertarians do not advocate drugs. We do, we just don't. We do, however, we absolutely believe in adults making adult decisions, without government intrusion, without government moral judgment. The voters of Colorado, of El Paso County, and the City of Colorado Springs separately